Hmm, what's the stuff?
Do we decide to mic anybody? Okay, okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay, so with this.
Copy of the agenda. We have a count. We have a copy of this. Today is June 3rd, twenty twenty five. Brighton City Council is now in session. At this time, for those that want to stand that could, and we're gonna open up our meeting as we always do, in Word of Prayer. Thank everybody for pressing your way out today. Thank you for being here. I'm gonna ask Reverend Johnson, would you lead us in Word of Prayer?
Our thanks, ma'am. Our thanks, ma'am. I was coming through today when they came to see me, but I asked for something I said. You get the good mistake tonight, because I said, we're going to be, we're going to be, we're not getting some of this. And I said, we should be, we should be, we should be. You know, we did a lot of things to clarify you, to probably let them see the word, to just leave, to see where it's been. I saw this, you know, today, we're clear, so man, please, about, you know, it's how we're doing, man, to work and see.
We throw seven dollars per month, an increase of two dollars. Section five, that the previous resolution or any part thereof, that conflict herewith is hereby repealed. Be it further resolved than all ordinances and resolutions or possible orders of revolutions, they shall be in conflict with this resolution or hereby repealed, to the extent required to give this resolution full force and effect. Adopted and approved this third day of June twenty twenty five. Now council, this resolution is in accordance with the contract that we have with Republic Services. When they do an increase, a go up on service, we must do an increase in services because this is required by the government, that garbage is paid for. It cannot be paid for by the city, it cannot be paid for by grants. It is paid for by the people that are receiving the services. So therefore, that's why the two dollar increase is needed to cover services. Also in your package, you have what we have collected every month from best new utilities, and you have what Republic Services are collecting. At this time, um, we're approximately two thousand dollars in the red, and we have approximately nine hundred houses. Two dollars, that eighteen hundred dollars is still want to cover, but it'll be close enough. So, are there any questions about our resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero one? Any questions? Counsel, what is your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Watkins.
Our motion that we approve resolution number two oh two five dash zero zero one.
Second.
Moved and proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposees? I have the most clear carry. Voice vote, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Watkins?
Aye.
Counsel McMullin? Counsel Hillyard?
Aye.
Counsel Murray? Counsel Johnson? Mayor Cooper?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number two, adoption of resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero zero two, ordinance for setting qualification fees.
Counsel, this resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero two is an ordinance which we must approve before June fifth. This is our last time to officially set the fees. And the fees, I read the fees, and then I read the ordinance. Election is fast approaching, and the fee to run for council is fifty dollars, and the fee to run for mayor is fifty dollars. According to eleven four six dash one, you can charge from ten dollars to fifty dollars. And we've always charged the fifty. I think one year we charged a hundred, but the law said we must charge no more than fifty. And so we're charging fifty for each person that's going to run for office. Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero zero two, an ordinance setting qualification fees. Be ordained by the City of Brighton City Council in Brighton, Alabama as follows. Section one, a qualification fee of the amount of fifty dollars, not less than ten dollars, nor more than fifty dollars, is hereby fixed and imposed upon all, that word, U P O, that should be upon. The word U P O should be upon. Before it is signed, that will be corrected. U P O, imposed upon all candidates seeking election as...
Miss Bell again.
As...
Mayor.
Mayor.
As mayor of the City of Brighton, Alabama, except as herein after provided for section two, a qualification fee in the amount of fifty dollars, not less than ten dollars, nor more than fifty, is hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking election as council member of the City of Brighton, Alabama, except as herein provided for. Section three, such qualification fees shall be paid to the city clerk and deposited in the general form of the city at the prior to the time of taking out qualification papers by such candidates. What that means for everybody that wants to run for office, whether it be mayor or city council, you must pay your fee before you're given the papers. So you understand. Any person, section four. Listen close to section four. Any person desired to qualify who is not financially able. If you want to run for a council or mayor, and you do not have the money, you still will be allowed to run, provided such prospective candidate furnishes the clerk with an affidavit stating that he or she is financially unable to pay the required fee fixed by this ordinance. You must provide proof that you can't pay. So, section five, this ordinance is adopted pursuant to section eleven, forty six two of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy five, that shall be effective in all elections, both general and special for, as fore-said, offices, from and after date of adoption. Does everyone understand the resolution? Does the resolution need to be read again? Okay, counsel.
Mayor, is it a, is it, is it a resolution or is it an ordinance? It's titled ordinance, but it's listed as a resolution. I just want to clear it up. If it's an ordinance, you know it needs to be read, but...
We're gonna make it a revolution. See, at the top, qualification fees. Revolution. Okay. Does everyone understand the correction? Revolution. Counsel, this was a resolution we're giving back to you again, so you can go over it. Counsel? Is there any questions? What is your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Watkins?
Our motion that we accept resolution number two oh two five dash oh oh two.
We can't accept it. We're gonna approve of this. Go ahead, Counsel.
Approve of the ordinance. And we said resolution, setting qualification fees.
Does everyone understand the motion?
Yes, she said all the resolution, all the...
No, where the, where the word ordinance is, that's gonna be changed to resolution. So it'll be a resolution. Does everybody understand the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and proper second, all in favor? Proposees? Voice vote, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Watkins? Counsel McMullin?
Aye.
Counsel Hillyard? Counsel Murray? Counsel Johnson?
Come on.
Counsel Johnson?
Please, please.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Cooper?
Aye. I have the most clear carry. Next item, Madam Clerk.
New business.
Okay, counsel, if you have any new business, you can bring it at this time. If you do not, would like you to just bring it to your committee chair report. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mayor's report.
Counsel and, and, and audience, thank you for coming again. We know you could have been somewhere else doing other things, but we thank you for coming to council meeting today. Notice of election. We've had a lot of people asking about election. Notice of election will be given no, uh, I'm sorry, June the tenth, next Tuesday. Notice of election will be given next Tuesday. Several of you have asked for applications and everything. Nothing will be available until next Tuesday, because the city does not have those materials yet itself. They will have them this week, and you can pick up a package. If you're running for office, as we say, it's fifty dollars. And you, uh, get a package to run for whichever office you'd like to run for on June the tenth. Although we will not be having council meeting next Tuesday, the notice must be posted by the mayor. And, and I would be, I'm saying it now, but I would oppose it. By law, it has to be posted by next Tuesday. Counsel, if everyone understands, it has to be posted by next Tuesday. So, at next Tuesday, this notice will go on the, all city buildings. A notice of election will go on all city buildings and businesses, and several businesses within the city. It also will go to all churches. And it's, it's required that we post it in three different places. So, we're gonna post it more than three different places. And it probably, we're gonna put it on our website and our Facebook page, so no one... And, and you just spread the word to people, let them know, you're running for office. No, Watkins won't say November, uh, June the tenth, you pick up the paperwork, June the tenth. Counsel, any questions on that? Also, uh, this week, uh, last week, we had the opportunity to meet with Senator Katie Brooke, uh, Britt. As you know, or you may not know, we're working on the Northern Beltline, and the Mayor's Association met with her, Senator Britt, and we had just auction time with the senator, and she gave us her information to contact her, if there's anything she can do to help us, and we will be contacting the senator. Clerk application, counsel, we will be interviewing the clerks, uh, Friday, starting at four P M. Uh, we looked at some applications, and some of those, we didn't work out. So, we had that, three that we had not contacted, so I contacted everybody. So they will be coming at four o'clock, starting Friday. Each interview will last only fifteen minutes. That person will leave, and when those five, or four, whichever, and then show up, then we'll bring it down to three, and we'll hold on up. Any questions on that? Okay. Also, counsel, there's two, uh, people that would like to, um, become Holy Saviors. They are not April certified, but they are willing to pay their own fees to go to the academy. We will, uh, I will be getting back with the chief on that. And also, at our next, uh, pre-council meeting, we'll discuss those candidates. Is there any questions you have for me, counsel? Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Reports of standing committee.
Counsel, if you have a report at this time, we'd like you to give it. And if you don't have one, say good evening, and we'll move on. Counsel Watkins, we'll begin with you today.
Good evening, everyone. This is not a report, but it's a request. Uh, we are getting ready for our, uh, Christmas toys for Todd, and I will be requesting that, uh, each, uh, person that gets a license to consider Brighton, give us a donation for our toys for Todd for Christmas. So I begin with each and every one of you. And I will give you the information as I get ready, toys for Todd for Christmas.
Okay.
And, and we're gonna, and if you don't want to give money, uh, uh, you can always buy toys and donate them to us. We'll take the toys. If you don't want to give us the money, we'll take the toys. We're gonna do from ages two to ten, because I found out, like, twelve years old, they don't want toys. They don't want toys. So we'll go from two to ten. And August, September, uh, Brighton Day, don't forget. I think you'll be doing it the last Saturday in September, Brighton Day. Bring your tents, your grills, your hot dogs, whatever, let's have a good time. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Counsel McMullin?
I'm John McMullin, this present time, I don't have anything.
Okay, counsel. Counsel Hillyard?
My name is Sandra Edgar, and I was gonna talk about the, uh, app you all who gave to the Friday public for the group. Also, we had a meeting with some of, uh, my coworkers at my house, where they're trying to have rights to rebuild without our eyes. They did a great job at therapy. They got a lot of money. We had a meeting with them yesterday here, and they're gonna try to help us to do apartments, whatever we need, and stand some bright in that. They got a, a, over a million dollars for therapy. So I talked to this Pat Paulman and Justin Washington, and they said they have us write out what we need and what we... And you know I can do that too. Give us a suggestion of what y'all want us to do in Brighton, what y'all looking for. And that way, we can give them, help them look for something too. But they are willing to help us get grants and whatever we need to build up Brighton again. And this is what we're gonna do now. So we got a lot of plans going on right now.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Murray?
Counsel Malana Murray, fifty ten, I have no report, ma'am.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Johnson?
I should be that lucky. Uh, Shereen Johnson, I'm Finance Committee Chair. One of the things I wanted to do today, and I, I, I have asked this young man from Regent Bank to come in, I want everybody to meet the people that keep me straight on finances in this city. That young man ain't gonna let me come in there and have one penny, two less. Uh, he gonna point it out, Miss Johnson, you ain't got this money right. So I want everybody to meet Mr. Otis. Mr. Otis has been very good for the City of Brighton. Anytime we are trying to open a money marketing account or anything of that nature, this man stayed with us until after six at night in a really bad storm to make sure that this city's finances work with us. So I'm grateful for him. I wanted everybody to know the people that keep my boots on. So, that's Mr. Otis, that's Regent Bank, um, I thank her, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, the, I want to talk about the ditch. The ditch, I walked the ditches with Mr. Warren on Sunday. I, um, we looked, we made very sure that everything is being cleaned out as it should be. We're not leaving any of phase one of this ditch deal undone. So, when I left on Sunday with Mr. Warren, we had gone all the way to Oakmont Street, ma'am. So, we are still working on that. The last thing I wanted to point out is that there was a gentleman here at the last council meeting, I believe it was, that said he wanted to do something about us being short on the driver for cleaning up. Well, my, my, um, resident, the Bonner community gave me the business today about the unsightly dirty area. And, um, we need to get some cleaning up done down there. Isabel, Isabel Street is really, got trash pile extremely high. We got some problems as far as trash not being picked up. And I explained that our driver was out right now due to medical issues. But we may need that young man that was here last time saying that he wanted to offer the drive to pick up him and his brothers or somebody. We need to, we may need to get them involved. Last thing, Miss Hillyard and, uh, uh, I'm sorry, not Miss Hillyard, the mayor and I went to a reception sponsored by Commissioner Tyson on Saturday, and it was a networking activity. So we got to meet several people throughout the state that are willing to come in and do things, but we have to be specific about those things that we want them to come in and do. I was not interested in none of those people that's talking about bonds and everything. I'm not interested in that, because we need to keep our finances as straight and narrow as they can be right now. And that's it. That's my report. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Counsel. And the reason she couldn't get out of bed, because she wouldn't leave. And it led to, to lock the doors on...
Yeah, they locked it in, but he didn't stop fishing. He didn't stop messing with it.
She wouldn't leave. So, thank you, Miss, Miss Johnson.
And one last thing, ma'am.
I thought you were finished, Miss Johnson.
Okay, okay, one last thing. I want to thank, uh, our, uh, clerk, clerk and staff, because they were diligently last Friday to make sure we had everything we needed for our office. And I just want them to know it didn't go unnoticed. Thank you, I mean.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
It's pressure from the public.
Public, this is you. If you're sitting on that side, you're the public. We give you two, three minutes to speak. And when you've finished speaking, we're gonna listen to what you're saying. We ask you to speak, and then have your seat, and someone will respond. We will not argue back and forth, or you will be asked to leave. We're gonna do it decent and in order, and we're gonna be respectful to each other. So, if you're here, counsel, and you have something you'd like to say, this is your opportunity to say it. The floor is open. Sevis?
Good evening. This is 4749 Short Lane Street. I just have one simple question I've continuously been asking about our roads. Uh, when will the roads project resume in the City of Brighton?
Let me give you the, the best answer that I have. As you know, we've, we've done many, many roads, and we can never do all of them at one time. Different funding sources come at different times. Right now, what I'm hearing from, uh, the commission side of the house, that we'll be, we already have gotten some additional funding. Right now, we have about three hundred thousand dollars to do roads. However, what you must understand, a lot of people don't understand, when we get these grants, that money doesn't come to us, and we have it in our bank account. That money stays with the county. It never comes to Brighton. Even though it's allocated for Brighton, they can only use it to work Brighton. But it don't come over here, and we have really control of it. Even when we do a joint project with the county, if they put fifty thousand dollars up, and we put a hundred thousand dollars up, it all becomes county money. They control that money. So right now, it's supposed to be this month, in June, that they will resume, uh, paving the roads. So, that's the best answer I have, this month. I don't know when. And a lot of times, when they give us a month, they'll be out there paving or digging, and have not notified us that they've started. We don't know until we see a piece of equipment out there. But it's supposed to be this month. Now, we also getting the Harlem Street Bridge, uh, repaired, replaced. It's gonna be widened, that street, I know it's in bad shape now, I know it's bad when you go to the bridge, but it should be, uh, start, that work should be started in August. So those are the dates I have, uh, from Jefferson County.
Okay, I guess I got, I got fifteen more seconds with my questions. Um, is my street on the list this time?
Sure, ma'am.
Short lane?
It should be. I don't, I'm not sure. I'll have to look back at it and see. Don't know. Not sure. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I don't understand what you're saying, most of you. Okay, who else? You wanna...
I would actually drop a letter, because you kind of work in unity in the city, if you could work together. So, I would just like to see if you could say it right. Because many of the current events that have caused us in an effort to resolve these battles still leads us to the leaders of the base, of the organizations, to work with us in unity to bring about a desired end. What we need from you is that you would cross the nominational differences and work with us to create a body that is driven by a need to see improvement in the city, and be effective in bringing about a change by having a vision that everyone would be able to plainly see. We are confident that if the leaders showed unity and have the same message for the vision that the community will understand the mission and become part of what they see. To bring us into light, as one said, that when they were all in one place, they prayed, they were all of one thought, the power to change the world was given. What we need from you is to come to a meeting that will allow us to sit down, give input on what your organization has the ability to do. If we hold to the fact that there are said, there's one Lord, one faith, and one baptism, we should be able to work in unity as a organization with the ability to help in all areas of this community, in which we have in place has light to help people out of the darkness, and even sometimes seeing the hopeless situations that they are in. We look forward to seeing you at this meeting, because we know you care for the people of this area that have been placed in your care. And I think that this letter should be drafted and sent out to all the leaders in these twenty-three churches around the community, that they will be able to come to a meeting and sit down. Because if the leaders come together, the people will know. I talked to some people today at a giveaway program, who've been living in Brighton all their lives, and don't, still don't know, right on Main Street, that they give away food boxes on stairs. They still don't know that the community is gonna give away different things, they have programs up there. And they are senior citizens who don't know about this. They've been living in Brighton all their life. Our communication is flawed. We need to get together and work on it so that everyone in the city, regardless of religion, base, or whatever they believe in, ought to know what the city is doing. Until we get that, nothing that we try to do is gonna work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Agent Johnson, Washington Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Damn, I'd like to have words. Well, Mr. Johnson, I still want you to, we're gonna reach out to every organization in the city, every religious organization, every, every pastor, every, everybody. And, and we'll find a place to meet. And I know, uh, at one time, somebody said, well, we shouldn't meet at church, because everybody's not religious. But we have to find a place to meet that's big enough for everybody. So, uh, we will be moving forward, was trying to reach out to everybody to let them know, and, uh, we'll take from there. Again, I want to say thank you to, okay, city attorney?
Uh, Mayor, I would like to ask that we are able to go into executive session for maybe about twenty minutes, um, to discuss impending litigation.
Is there anyone else like to bring word? Okay. Again, I want to say thank you to everybody for, for coming out, um... Hold on, stand and give your name, please.
Hi, I'm Dana, and I live at four three one three Edward Street. I, I just want to ask a question about, which really touches on his point about community involvement, and I think that's to all of us, just to give it a thought. And what does the leadership think about having a true community assessment? And maybe coming up with some goals that we, as a community, would be willing to work with you, with leadership in an effort to unify Brighton, regardless of titles, creeds, and color. And so I'll sit down with that.
Okay, tell you, tell me your name again, say your name.
I am Dana Dickerson, and I live at four three one three Edward Street. And I would like to truly see how we can get a couple, um, road bumps on my street, because they drive a bit like they still on sixty-five, and I have a six-year-old grandson that I'm just moving in from Huntsville.
Okay.
It's been an issue for several years.
Well, let me, miss, miss, uh, who's her name? Miss Dana?
Miss Dana?
Miss Dana?
I am Dana Dickerson, I run the Fund for Younger Association. I also run the Vibe Intervention Improvement Program in Birmingham, Justice County, U. A. D., as well as the City of Birmingham, so on community circuit, as well as people advocate. And I live in Brighton, so I would like to do the same great things here with those that are willing to, you know, do whatever we need to do. And I think it's prime time, because Brighton is enlarged. And one of my biggest things is why do others have to come in and gentrify our communities? And why can't we do it? So it's just a thought.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a wonderful thought. But all that that you just said, we, we didn't know, you, you had all that going on. You've never brought it to us and told us that thing. And when you have different people saying, I want to help do this, and I want to help do that, that makes a great team. So I know you and Mr. Johnson, and Pastor Edwards, and Mr. Bank, and everybody can get on a team and, and make this stuff happen. It, it, it helps. When you have someone the size of elected officials trying to do every little thing. You have a team out there working, it helps, and it brings a voice to the community. Now at this time, uh... Now, at this time, uh, is there anybody else before we go, we, we gotta go and take care of some more business. At this time, counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
I'm gonna make the motion that we go into executive session.
Moving to proper second, at this time, we will be going to executive session to discuss pending litigation, we will be in, uh, executive session for about twenty minutes, then we will, uh, be considered dismissed, or do, counsel, do we need to resume, do we need to come back? Uh, Your Honor, do we need to come back?
I don't anticipate anything coming out of it, that we need a vote, so no.
Okay, so.
Mayor Cooper?
After these, hold on, Miss Johnson.
I'd like to offer a motion.
Hold on, Miss Johnson, hold your motion, after these minutes, then we go into executive session to discuss pending lit- litigation, then we would consider ourselves dismissed. Go ahead, Miss Johnson.
Mayor Cooper? I'd like to offer a motion that we be dismissed, and, and, uh, I'd like to offer a motion that we be dismissed.
After, wait, 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 after executive session?
After executive session, after executive session.
Sorry. Moving to proper second, all in favor? Most expected carry, we're now in executive session. Counsel?
Mayor, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, thank you. Thank y'all for coming, thank you, everybody, thank y'all.
Where you going? I did what I supposed to do. Where you going, ma'am? Out to home.